Let us pray. Father, we come to you today thanking you for all the blessings that you've given us, the celebration of our July the 4th anniversary. We thank you, oh God, for this great city, and we pray for the citizens. We pray, Lord, also, for the leadership, Mayor Tyler and her staff and the city council and all the workers that perform duties every day. God, we pray for their safety. Now, I pray for continued blessings, and I ask forgiveness of our sins and show us, oh Lord, to be the leadership that we should be by following your example in all things. Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please honor me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, you call the row, please.
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilman Emerson.
Here.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Councilman Corbin.
Present.
Councilman Hurd.
Present.
Councilwoman Lynch and Councilman Vogt.
Here. Tomorrow, entertaining motion to approve the minutes of the administrative council. Does any council member have any awards or special recognition guests?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask the council to indulge me, I'd like to acknowledge my deepest sympathy and extend my condolences to Mons. Senior Carson LaCaz. The city has lost a great spiritual leader, and I pray for what he has done and for this city and for his family, and may God bless us and rest in peace.
Have councilmen. Mayor Tyler, you have any awards or recognitions you'd like, other senior guests you'd like to...
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Anything relative to business you'd like to...
Sure.
Anything relative to city business you'd like to speak on?
Not today. Thank you.
Mr. Green, anyone has anything for Mr. Green, proper standard? Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Crawford, we got a revenue collection plan already.
Pretty good one. Pretty good. There's some inflated numbers, but we saw the caveat down below, which was nice to make that clear. Sorry. Still positive. Very positive.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bradford?
That circulated earlier, Mr. Chairman.
Today?
Yeah.
About 2:15. Try getting it in right when nobody...
Nice looking there. The numbers are up.
We have no public hearing today. Mr. Crawford, will there be any legislation to be added tomorrow?
I believe there is. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, we have an ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the city of Shreveport for the Providence West subdivision in section 19 in Cattle Parish. It's not on your agenda. It will be tomorrow.
Okay, will be tomorrow.
But I think...
Did you pass it on?
No. Just a minute.
I have a request.
Vice Chair?
Okay, this is a question for the city attorney. If we wanted to add an item on the agenda that involved actually giving up a right-of-way or an easement, abandoning, I believe is our term, is that a two-reader to abandon? Two readers?
Yes.
But could one of those, from a legal standpoint, be added to the agenda or for us to abandon an easement or right-of-way? I think there's a lot more to the discussion. I get it. But is there any other type of public advertising required by state law if we abandon an easement?
I need to do the research on that. I can't recall just on the top of my head if there's a notice requirement for the abandonment of an easement. Usually with land, there are some notice requirements. I just want to double check. I'm not sure right now.
I'm going to tell you what the story is. So, it has to do with the former El Chico's in Madison Park.
Okay.
So initially, El Chico's, the park and the gas station offered a 10-foot extension or width extension of the easement. The park and the gas station, after it was no longer utilized, i.e. whatever the sewer water line that was going to be there wasn't required for it, had taken back that 10-foot. But the area that is between the former El Chico's and was never abandoned. Okay? So it's a little carve-out of, I don't know, maybe it's 50 feet long and 10 feet wide there that, since neither one of the properties on either side are using that utility core or either, what they're trying to do is, as part of their refurbishment of that building to repurpose it for a restaurant, they're needing to extend, I'm going to say, six feet into that supposed right-of-way to protect the tree, otherwise they're going to have to take it down. So there's a little timeliness to it because they're kind of stuck at the moment of this little particular piece. So I want to know how much time it's going to require for us to work through this. And I believe they were talking about stopping that earlier.
Yeah, I look at that issue, and I have a suggestion that I can talk to you about that maybe they'd be interested in to make it faster.
Okay.
Because I think timing is the issue.
Timing is the issue. Meet with a couple of things to get the property ultimately open. So that's kind of...
Okay.
So thank you.
Councilman Bradford? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm inquiring about the added legislation. Can somebody expand on that a little bit further? The added legislation.
This is an ordinance to enlarge the city limits for the boundaries of City of Shreveport for the Providence West subdivision development, Cattle Parish. It's in Councilman Corbin's District D.
That's property off of the Southern Loop?
It would run off of the corner of Wallace and Southern Loop and have a new entrance coming off of Wallace Lake connecting to the current Providence behind the property on Southern Loop.
Okay, I understand.
It's an expansion of the existing neighborhood.
It would be nice to have a, hopefully, a plot or a map. Not that I don't know my meets and bounds, but picture might be worth it.
We'll get you one. If it's our electronic agenda, we'll have all of that.
Okay.
You know, at this point, Councilman, what, how many new lots have been made available in there?
Between 450 and 500.
Really?
That's a big number.
Wow. Every 160,000 acres. And we can benefit from such development. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have no executive appointments today. We have no one to speak. There are no items on the consent agenda for introduction. And, Mr. Crawford, let's continue with items to be adopted.
Absolutely. Under the consent agenda legislation, these ordinances are available, or resolutions are for adoption. Resolution 91 authorizes the mayor to execute an act in release of a utility and drainage easement in the Rockwood additional subdivisions in Section 2, T-17 North and R-14 West. This is at the intersection of Hearn and Lakeshore.
Hearn and Lakeshore.
Yeah, there are no city utilities and no other private utilities in there as well.
Is that really? That's yours and not...
Yeah, I'm picturing for Lakeshore.
I would have thought it was yours, but that's why I'm asking.
Lakeshore is a...
I was like, Hearn and Lakeshore, that's got to be...
Lakeshore is a... I'm not Lakeshore, I'm sorry, Hearn.
Hearn is the better.
Yeah. But you said there's no utilities?
There's no utilities in what they're asking, asking to be abandoned there.
Be abandoned?
To be abandoned.
Okay, I understand.
No further discussion. Mr. Crawford, please proceed.
Yes, sir. Under regular agenda legislation, these are resolutions on second reading and final passage are which will require only one reading. Resolution 86 authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission and the city. This is for the 2018 Powerboats Nationals to be held at the Riverfront, August 30th through September the 3rd. Resolution 87 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the North Shreveport Business Association. This is for their 2018 Heroes Barbecue, where the proceeds go to our local law enforcement and firefighters and first responders. Resolution 88 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission. This is for the upcoming National Hot Air Balloon Rally and Championships at LSU, starting, I believe, this Friday through Sunday. So, get there and go out. Resolution 89 authorizes the use of certain equipment by Mount Olive Baptist Church. This is for their homecoming celebration on November the 4th. Resolution 90 authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with Red River Stem, Inc., to manage, operate and use the Sciport Discovery Center to provide services to the public. Resolution 92, to allocate funds to a specific non-for-profit organization for funds budgeted in other categories, other charges in the Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund. This is the Shreveport Urban Film Festival prize for $10,000. Resolution 93, to welcome Roosevelt Collins to the City of Shreveport for his hometown NFL Celebrity Weekend and to thank him for devoting his time and talents to assist the youth of Shreveport. Resolution 94 is to recognize Reverend Gregory Hudson for his service to the greater Shreveport community.
Okay. I have Councilman Bradford.
Okay, three of the resolutions I want to address. I want to address 92, 93 and 94, but 93 and 94, Mr. Chairman, those events has happened, the Roosevelt Collins Home Celebrity Weekend. I mentioned to Mr. Collins that we had a little reception, and I acknowledged his work and him coming back to his hometown to put on a football camp, celebrity, about two dozen former NFL players, and they had a great time. Mayor, you attended it today?
I attended it, yes. Good story.
Yeah. And I just wanted to sort of have that ratified tomorrow, as well as Reverend Gregory Hudson, who is a pastor in the MLK area of the city. Yesterday, they celebrated his 80th anniversary at his current church, about 33 years of ministering and pastoring in the Shreveport area. Acknowledge that as well. But I really want to... 92, Councilwoman Lynch, as I was headed this way, called me. And, Mr. Phillips, is this your project?
Well, I am involved with them, and we're hosting. She is the spirit.
Can you come up for a minute, please?
Just come to the podium.
Hello, my name is Tanisha Morris. I am the founder and the creator of the Shreveport Urban Film Festival. It's my first year. I've had over 49 submissions from all over the country. We've selected 12 films, and these are the 12 films, lovely films, all over the country as well. We have three filmmakers coming in from out of town, two locals, and I created it because of the lack of opportunity for African-Americans, African-American creators, filmmakers around the country and locally. Our mission is to create a destination that showcases the very best films that would otherwise get overlooked because of the lack of star power or finances. The rules are that it has to be written or directed by an African-American filmmaker, and what I'm trying to do is bridge the gap in the film industry and also bring some culture to the city. These are where the films have been submitted from, and our top selection, we have...
Can you pass those too?
Sure.
The African films too?
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So the top films, we have one out of New York, LA, Chicago. We have three coming from New Orleans. Those are the ones that are actually out of town that are coming up, driving up July the 28th. And as Mr. Roy said, the festival will be held at Crystal Stairs this year. In the up and coming years, I hope to have the festival at additional venues, hopefully the Robinson and other venues, but are there any questions?
So how are you intending to market the festival?
I already have been marketing completely guerrilla-style. Social media, Facebook, you can ask around town. People know about the festival through social media. I created this hip-hop type of trailer that includes all of the films. A lot of people have heard about that or seen that on social media as well. And also, the filmmakers out of town and locally have been promoting this event right now. Go ahead.
So the dates have been set already?
Yes.
Where are they?
It's July the 28th. It's actually about three weeks away.
Would it sell out on the first show?
Yes, sold out on the first showing, and I have over 700 people either interested or going, close to 800.
And are these, like, I guess, not feature-length films?
No, they're short films.
And what kind of time range?
Okay, from five minutes on up to 25 minutes. So, 12 short films. And each showing will show all 12 films. We have a short intermission after the sixth film, and then they come back and watch the other six films. And I have my judges there. My judges are from two out of Los Angeles, one who has worked for Sundance and Slam Dance, and another who is one of the senior producers at Full Sail University, which is one of the biggest entertainment schools in the country.
Can you state or elaborate on what would be the benefit of the city to be involved in this festival?
The culture. The benefit from the city is just having people from elsewhere coming here. So now I have young filmmakers, a potential, maybe the next Ava DuVernay, coming to this city and seeing the city, and maybe she would want to film here, you know? There's all types of opportunities. As I get more judges, maybe in the years coming up, them coming here and coming to the city, enjoying the casinos and all of that, you know? I think it's just a great opportunity just to bring people here and expose them to the city, because a lot of people don't, well, not a lot, but some people don't know about Shreveport. And as you know, we had the film industry here years ago, you know, and that kind of fizzled out, but I'm trying to bring that back here, you know, and bring some culture.
I see. I understand what you're saying.
Uh-huh.
So you see an economic impact on...
Absolutely, absolutely. And if I had more venues this year, it would be even bigger, because like I said, I had a lot of people following the page every single day. Every time I post, I sell a ticket. So I have all these people following the page that are interested in coming. The room won't be big enough. Crystal Stairs won't be big enough for the people that are interested or that are coming to the festival.
I'd like to speak with you afterwards. You have, I'll contact you. Crystal Stairs and find out. I want to learn more about it before tomorrow, but I appreciate what you're doing.
Okay, thank you so much.
One moment.
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Okay, so obviously, there's a lot more to than just coming here to ask for money, right?
Right, 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 absolutely.
And let me, merits or not, are you organized under the Secretary of State as any type of formal entity?
Yeah, I have my personal business, Tanisha Morris Entertainment, that I just opened up, and also I'm working on a 501(c)(1) for the Shreveport Urban Film Festival.
Okay, but the Shreveport Urban Film Festival is not a registered entity at this point?
No, not yet, no, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to just say this, that is going to be a big impediment to doing this between now and the 20th.
Right, of course.
From my perspective, I'm not, I don't want to make it sound like I don't support your organization, but I'm not 100% sure, and I'm going to ask the city attorney to formalize whether we can give money, city monies to non-registered agencies. I'm assuming, I'm going to look for any guidance from you, but I'm assuming that's an impediment. Now, I will say, on the other hand, for civic appropriations, we're still 501(c)(3) requirement, which is an internal issue that can possibly be discussed, but I think a bigger impediment is this lack of registration. So I say that, but I certainly applaud the efforts. Have you thought about combining this with the Shreveport Film Prize or not really, or...
Louisiana Film Prize?
Louisiana Film Prize?
Not the Film Prize, but I have discussed options as far as getting a fiscal agent through somebody like Shrek. So that is on the table, and I told that that was a definite option from a couple of people, so that, in reference to...
Why not with the Louisiana Film Prize?
Um...
I mean, I'm at Simpleton, I think films probably...
Well, it's a separate, it's kind of like a conflict of interest, you know? They're their own separate brand. They have their own, you know, they're doing their own thing. I think it's great. I was actually in the Film Prize back in 2016. Fantastic, you know, festival, but as a separate brand, you know, it's just a completely different vibe that I'm trying to give and a different audience as well.
Okay, and then, the other, I mean, I do have kind of something that ultimately, if we wanted to move forward, you'd have to, from my perspective, explain what you intend to do with the money and kind of how the whole economic model is based, i.e. I'm going to take, look to bring in this much at the gate, and I'm going to use that to supplement whatever my award is. And unfortunately, all I have in front of me is three whereas statements that really don't explain much to me...
Right, right.
...about why we should be given $10,000 if we could anyway.
Right.
So that would be certainly something that I would be interested in hearing at some point.
Okay, I will have that sheet for you. I mean, this year, it's much smaller, but, you know, award money, hopefully to give something to the filmmakers that are coming in from out of town. Some of them are staying overnight, you know, to support their efforts. We have a meet and greet that we have set up. A lot of people are excited about that, so, and also probably flying in the judges and locations and having staff for that day, providing food, just those small necessary things that will make it a great festival for our guests here.
Oh, no, I mean, I assume you have all that already set up?
Yes, yes.
The 28th, I mean, and I'm just thinking that for next year, if you want to go forward with this, I think we may need a little bit more kind of information on the economic model...
Right.
...for us to support.
Okay.
But I recognize that this is kind of, you know, two weeks before the case or whatever, so...
But going through Shrek, Shrek is a...
Well, if they're going to, you know, if they're going through civic appropriations, they need to go through the formalized civic appropriations...
Process.
And the process and submittals. Jeff confirmed those are September timeframe for civic appropriation?
When do you, the administration usually sends those applications out? And it's in the late summer, early fall?
It's August or September, we take applications for civic appropriations.
Okay.
So it seems to be...
They're already online.
They're online.
They're available online already.
Right.
Yeah, right now.
But you submit through that, and then there's a board, just give you the process, that meets normally in the first quarter, if not the fourth quarter, for that year's applications.
Okay.
July 31st is the deadline. They're online now, though.
Got you.
Got you. About three weeks.
Chairman, FYI.
Any more questions?
Yes. Councilman Corbin? Thank you. Were any of your films filmed here in Shreveport?
Two of them, and those are actually our local filmmakers, yes.
And they were filmed on location?
Shreveport, mhm.
And who else is funding the festival?
I'm funding the festival. So I have Northwood Acting Studio offered up the Best Actor and Best Actress, which I didn't have those award. They offered up the Best Actor and Best Actress Award. I have a couple, a few family members that are helping me out, but I am, for the most part, single-handedly handling all the cost.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions?
Councilman Flur?
I just had a question. The 28th shortly will be here. Why so late to ask the council for funding?
Well, through this process, you know, this type of information and learning about there are opportunities or funds out here, you know, people aren't giving out free information like that on the street, you know? So when they told me that this was going on, I just said, well, I'll just come down here, and if I'm not mistaken, it's the beginning of a fiscal year and I was also told that it could take months, so maybe it can be for the next film festival next year. So I just decided to get in early.
Last question. Which two movies is it that we're hearing?
The Foot Switch and also Life Conditions.
Just as also FYI, the, you may want to, and again, I don't know what their requirements are, you know, for various events, but the Convention and Tours Bureau, they do sometimes have funds available for, you know, like supplement marketing costs for people out of town and things like that, so that's definitely worth a phone call if you haven't had an opportunity to speak with them yet.
Thank you.
So just as you were saying about learning about what else is out there, that's one thing that you might want to look into, because sometimes they're able to really help with events that are growing. And, I mean, it sounds interesting. It sounds like it's really a neat, you know, market that is, certainly is a growing market if it's interested in film and, you know, a neat way to highlight it. There are certainly some questions that we're hoping to get answered, just in terms of formatting and timing and those kind of things, but thank you so much for coming down here to share it with us.
Thank you.
It's really cool to learn about it.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, no, here's your stuff. Yeah, I had to come in.
Councilman Bradford?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I want to speak with you later. I'll find, after the meeting, I'll find you.
All right.
Okay, I know where Crystal Stairs is.
Right.
But my statement, Mr. Chairman, to the council is that while she was making her presentation, I was looking at the other resolutions. The other resolutions, which is asking the city for assistance in providing equipment or waiving fee totals, $28,800. Cost of the city for the projects that we want to support, we have support. My support or not support of this project is going to be further conversation. I know Councilman Lady Lynch called me, I'd say, as I was traveling here and made a case of why we should assist in this endeavor, but I just want to say that it's going to be my position that there are three or four resolutions that are going to be adopted tomorrow, asking us to assist them in their endeavors, that total over $28,000.
You mean where we're given equipment for something?
The value of those assistance are listed. What I'm just saying is still assistance that the city is sponsoring or assisting with that is...
And there's a very different legal difference between giving somebody a check for $10,000 bucks and providing police or barricades or tables or support for a festival.
Well, I mean, it's, again, I'm going to use my favorite, my favorite phrase, it's not what's right and what's wrong, it's how you look at it. And I'm saying that if we say, if there's a will for us to do something, we can find a way to do it. I mean, using another kind of fiscal agent or doing something that will show our support for an endeavor, for a group or an organization, I think, should be always looked at as an option of what we do. I'm saying, I don't see a difference. I see if we was not, if we wasn't to charge and not waive fee or assist with certain equipment and waiving fees, then that would go directly to the city conference, that we are looking at as a benefit... That, that we are looking at as a benefit, whether it's in kind or whether it's, it's monetary, I think, I think it's the same, same, same scenario of how we, how we chose to address it. I just wanted to make that statement, thank you.
What church, what church is that Gregory Hudson, that, I'm sorry?
St. Luke. And this chairman, he will be here tomorrow, and if you would like for him to do the application, he'd be happy to.
Okay. Mr. Crawford, would you proceed with introduction of resolution?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to July 24th, 2018. Resolution 95 authorizes the mayor to make application with the U.S. Department of Justice to seek funding for the project Safe Neighborhood Grants. This is 159,488 dollar grant, that is a U.S. Marshall Western District of Louisiana grant that we will be the fiduciary agent of, and receive a 10% of that, as well as some of the grant splitting between the Shreveport Police Department and other law enforcement agencies in the district.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Brouck?
Thank you. Now, when I saw this, I immediately said, wow, great, we can, we can, we can accept whatever assistance we can get from any entity that will assist us in, in our policing and crime fighting, crime fighting challenges. Now, exactly what would this do, Mayor, specifically, you know, specifically what this would do?
I'm gonna ask Chief Lehman, who's gonna come up and explain exactly what this will help us do with helping to keep Shreveport safe.
Yes. Good afternoon. Yeah, so the Department of Justice has released this funding opportunity, and the Western District of Louisiana, as Chief Crawford said, has availability of obtaining 159,000 dollar grant funds. About 15,900 of that will go to the fiscal agent, which has already been selected to be the Shreveport Police Department, so we will oversee this grant. A number of agencies within the Western District have the opportunity to apply for funding, and Shreveport Police also applied for a little over 40,000 dollars. That funding will be split, not 50/50, but proportionally with the Caddo Parish Sheriff's Office, and so about 26,000 dollars of funds will be spent by Shreveport Police, and the remaining 14,000 by Caddo Parish Sheriff's Office, and we're asking to focus specifically on gun violence.
Gun violence?
Yes, sir.
And, and because it was applied for that purpose, it can't be, it can't, it can't be repurposed?
It cannot, there were four or five, I've got a list of actual avenues we could have used to seek this funding, but we specifically wanna focus on, on gun violence, so it would have to be appropriated as such.
Have you put together any, any type of plan to how we could deal with gun violence in the city?
I don't have a specific operational plans to how those funds will be spent. We've obtained PSN grant funds for a number of years, from 2003 to 2011, the Shreveport Police was recipient of this funding. We have not received it over the last six or seven years. It was a bit of a competitive process, is my understanding, and Louisiana did not meet the threshold to receive any funding from the Department of Justice. This year, Louisiana did receive funding once again, and so we're applying, we're applying again. It's mainly spent in overtime funding, though, so it's officers working in areas such as Office of Special Investigations, the Caddo Shreveport Narcotics Task Force. It also involves investigators from our Violent Crimes Investigative Unit to focus on offenders that are found to be in possession of illegal weapons, or known offenders that are using weapons in commission of violent crimes, and to kind of investigate those interests a little further for prosecution.
Well, like I said earlier, certainly I welcome any initiative that could help keep our citizens safe, regardless of how it's packaged, as long as it's supervised by the Shreveport Police Department, and results could be, or the achievement and results could be forwarded to this, to this body.
Yes, sir.
And I think, I think, I think that will happen. So I appreciate that, and I have a clear understanding of how you can make that, or at least attempt to lessen the gun violence that exists in this, in this city.
Yes, sir, thank you.
As long as it's something for, for gun violence, and then I think that we all up here would be in, in agreeance and happy about that grant funding, as far as that goes. The operation process, or whatever the, the plan is, or whatever, as long as there's one in place, I think we, we, we're fine with that, and we don't have to put it out there to, for everybody to know, but we're just glad that it, that we are able to get the funding, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna yield, 'cause I do want to inquire about the, our attempt to include the Caddo Parish Sheriff's Department in some, in some city crime initiatives, but I'll wait until any of the meetings to address them.
Sure.
Yeah.
Did the, did the council lady say she'll be here tomorrow?
She will be tomorrow.
Just, I'd rather her to speak up on her, herself, for her own projects or what she has, somebody else.
She'll be here tomorrow.
No one else? Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, under our introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to July 24th, 2018, ordinance 56 is to revise certain provisions of Chapter 25, 26, and 78 of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to obtaining permits for use and encroachments on city public right-of-ways and on city-owned property. Ordinance 57 amends the 2018 budget for the general fund, this is a Shreveport Fire Department amendment of 93,586 in insurance proceeds used to pay off the repairs for a damaged engine. And then ordinance 58 amends sections of Articles 7, Chapter 90, Traffic and Vehicles for the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to broken meters, overtime parking, and parking, and permitted parking. This is a DDA piece of legislation. Liz, and the head of Shreveport Park, will be here tomorrow to answer any questions relative to that.
On 57, what was that number again? Councilor Zink?
Of course, I wasn't here for a week, so I got one question. Okay, 56, so the only one that we've changed the fees on 56 is, instead of the double the fines, it's 20% more.
20%.
That's the only cha, I mean, I went through what I thought, I couldn't find it anywhere else because of the-
That, yes.
Same thing with the linear foot number looks the same.
Correct. And we just relocated everything to be more user-friendly.
The only fees deal that's changed is this reduction from double to 20%. Okay, thank you. Ordinance 58, has anybody, I see Liz is not here, but has anybody been involved in this? This is fairly complicated, particularly the permit part of the deal.
Public Safety Committee did a review of it.
Okay, and it sounds great.
I can eliminate some parking that they have done outside of the front here that's been free, and so by getting these broken meters and things fixed.
Yeah, I think the boat, broken meter stuff, of course, it's just gonna be a notification piece, obviously, to the guy who parks on the broken meter, hopefully that's gonna be clear. But the one that's surprising a little to me is the permit deal, but they feel comfortable that they're gonna be able to implement that.
Yes, yes.
There's somebody commenting about 25 cents they were owed from a neighbor, so.
Mr. Crawford, would you proceed with ordinances on second reading and final passage?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, be advised too, under the previous introduction of ordinances, your added legislation for Providence will go next tomorrow-
Okay.
-in that area. Ordinances on second reading and final passage, ordinance number 30 is to establish a City of Shreveport Planning and Zoning Development Department, City of Shreveport PZ and D Department, along with the accompanying boards and commissions, to assume the duties and responsibilities of the Shreveport Metropolitan Commission of Caddo Parish, its staff, and its ZBA, as exercised within the city limits of Shreveport, to authorize and direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary ordinances and other legal documents to request the mayor to prepare the necessary organizational chart, budgets, and to hire personnel, so that the Shreveport PZ and D Department can begin operations on January the 1st, 2019. Ordinance 51 authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement, lease agreement, with a city-owned property located south of and adjacent to 6235 North Lake Shore Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana 71107, in Caddo Parish, to Deborah Ann Sharp and Rebecca Gail Sharp Stern, leases, for the purposes of leases to maintain and improve the subject property, said property is not needed for public purpose. Ordinance 53 declares the city's intention to establish temporary construction servitudes on certain adjudicated properties for the water and sewer consent decree projects. Ordinance 54 also declares the city's intention to establish permanent and temporary servitudes on certain adjudicated properties for the water and sewer consent decree project. 53 and 54 are two separate projects, so we have them listed in two separate ordinances. Ordinance 55 declares certain city equipment to be surplus, and donating such equipment to the Louisiana State University of Shreveport. These are old bleachers in need of repair that we removed when we rehabbed Cargill Ballpark.
Councilor Zink?
Ordinance 51, so what is the, what are the, they currently have a lease, correct?
It's month-to-month now. It's, it's an old expired lease, that effectively has been operating month-to-month since it expired in 2015 or 16.
Okay, and what do they do on, with-
So when they originally entered into the lease, again, this is not a lease that was, well, let me just say it this way, they, they, they had some recreational facility, I think they had a swimming pool back there, there was-
For the public?
No, no, this was for that property owner, the, the adjacent property owner that's contained in the original lease is Exhibit C, so now it's under the 172 contour line, which the city of Shreveport has a history of not leasing or selling that property. However, in this instance, you have, as a result of the 2015 flood, I believe, these structures are starting to go in on themselves, it's dilapidated, it's visible from, oh, there's a dilapidated dock and pier that extend out there, so there's infrastructure on that property that has been falling in for the last two years. And the adjacent property owners requested that they be allowed to go in and remediate that via the lease, to go in and remediate it, rebuild the pier, bring it back up, and maintain it, in order to show that they have, one, lake access, but two, also, they don't have this eyesore behind them. And so because it's under the 172, it is out of the ordinary, but at the same time, there's no ability to develop it or to, you know, historically, the city would not sell property that's under that elevation mark.
I mean, public purpose, right, there has to be some public, I mean, I guess the public purpose-
The public purpose is maintaining the property, that's not having to go in there and cut it and keep it maintained.
Keep it maintained.
There's not, there's not a public access road to the property, it's cut off.
Correct, it's completely landlocked and bordered by the, by the lake on the south side of it.
Okay, in the absence of this lease, is there not a requirement for them, under law, to clean up them, after themselves in this public property? I mean, I'm saying this, I, I, I'm a little confused on why we can't just tell them to go in and maintain property that they've put improvements on and not under their previous lease?
They weren't the original SEs, the original lease was executed in 1932, so that was a, I believe, Mayor Pham, or-
My, yeah, I mean, I get it, okay.
Right, so there's, there's no requirement, contextually, for us to require them to clean up that property, because they don't own it, but they have access to it.
In this month-to-month lease?
Correct. So it, it was, it was heritable, and I'll say it like this, it's not a lease, that 1932 lease is not a lease that the city would likely enter into today, but because of the circumstances, that you have this dilapidated piece of property there, it becomes an eyesore, and you have a swimming pool and tanks back there, septic availability, there is a concern that the further deterioration may cause some damage to that property itself. So, I was to answer your question, the reason why our office recommends going into the lease is that it maintains some controls of that area, so that in the future, there's not some group that comes in and tries to use it for a commercial purpose, and also because they are the only adjacent property owners with access to that area.
Okay, and there's no, I have to think of my terms in the oil business, but there's no continuation of liability, like that whatever the previous tenant does, whoever assumes the lease takes on the liability, I mean, in an oil well, right, if I sell a lease, I take on any of the liability, depending on how I write my contract, of the predecessor. So in this case, that liability doesn't transfer to the new, I mean, I guess, let me see, I'm, I'm a little concerned about getting into a 50-year lease-
Sure.
-for the payback, because if the payback of the 50-year lease is there assuming the liability, then I wanna know why they haven't assumed it already, okay? And then if it's the payback of keeping it clean, well, I think we can do it at a five-year renewable for five years. I just think 50 years seems extreme for what we're getting, but I honestly don't know enough about it to really-
Sure, and I'd like to have Mr. Hamaway, who's the representative of the Stearns, to come, I can ask him to come visit with you on it. Quite frankly, I, he would be more appropriate to speak to the term length of it, that was the request, the term between, actually, one of 100 years, but-
I thought I saw 99.
Well, that's what's allowable on those types of properties, but the actual financing of the improvements, you know, making sure that the tanks are up to date, they want to be able to collateralize against that lease. So I think that's the, the actual interest of the adjacent property owners.
Understood, but clearly 50 years isn't collateralizing against the, I mean-
So I, look, I, I can have him come speak to that, because it's-
I think it would be, and I'm not saying anybody's doing anything wrong, I just wanna make sure we're acting in the best interest of the city, of the city, Shreveport. And I, it wasn't necessarily meant to be critical, it was just like-
I'm sure.
How do we get? Okay, thank you.
Let me, let me ask, uh-
Councilor Brouck?
The terminology, not needed for public purposes, does that put us in a, you know, category of, it's not, if it, or when it can become somewhat valuable, we can utilize it, versus a way of adjudication, what's, what's, what posture you see this property?
Again, that property lies below a flood line.
Sure.
So it is something impartial that is very, will likely never be developed, and so the commercial benefit to the city is negligible. So the alternative for the city is to maintain it, because it becomes our-
Yeah, unless ours probably gotta maintain.
Correct.
Yeah, but we are, we are also in that responsibility to these people.
Correct.
Yes.
But, but you-
See, we have enough to maintain, if we can get somebody else to help us, we need that help.
I guess, I guess what I need to say, what I'm trying to get to is, can we just sell it, that's, that's what I'm trying to say.
Again, because it's under the 172 contour line-
Sure.
-that has never been the policy of the city, we've never, because it's the lake, it is, it is the lake at a very low level, it is, again, when it flooded, it was completely underwater.
Oh, yeah, well, I, I'm familiar with the property, the area.
Right.
There's a certain flood zone.
And, and, you know, in my conversations with engineering, you know, historically, the city's taking a position that they don't wanna sell the lake, because then you lose the total control of it. You don't, you don't wanna begin selling off portions of the lake. So there are certain instances where you see, like an island, they may have a property on it, on the lake, but that's above the 172 contour line, so by the, you know, foundational documents for the lake, what was created and established, that's not technically city property, but everything under the 172 contour line is-
Perfect, perfect response, I, I did, I did, I appreciate that.
Mr. Thompson, is there any table of legislation to be removed?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
We have one property standing up here?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Green will be coming forward to talk about that.
Property we have today is two nineteen Columbia Street. This is a, mainly a demolition because of what we have with the front dormer of the structure, front porch area of the structure. Uh, the rest of the structure appears to be pretty solid and sound. The owner has pulled the apartment, they've ripped out, they started ripping out, uh, the lower level of the porch, porch area that you walk on, and replaced, getting ready to replace that. The dormer still needs to be replaced, but the owner has asked for sixty days to complete this and get this wrapped up, to make substantial improvement to the structure all the way around.
I would like to make a motion for that sixty-day extension, and in addition to that, I do want to say I appreciate Property Standards has kept us posted on the progress of this one. This is one where, you know, the, it was a, somebody had passed away and the daughter was trying to assume the responsibility of it, and they were, you know, they had to deal with some issues there, but, um, we gave them some deadlines to meet, and they met those in terms of pulling apartments and getting some things done, so they're, they're being active, um, and hopefully, they're able to get this property saved. It is in the historic district, and it is actually on the, you know, contributing elements list, so we'd like to see it saved if possible. So I think sixty days is reasonable, if, if the Property Standards Department is comfortable with that, I'd make that motion.
That's it. It's been moved by Councilman Everson and seconded by Councilman Corbin, sixty days. Any other discussions? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries with six and one exit. That's that. There are no ADO appeals today, and no MPC appeals tomorrow. Any other appeals, Mr. Thompson?
There are none.
Are there any reports from office and boards and committee? Seeing none.
We do have an executive session today.
Today?
Don't steal arts clerk's report, I mean, I mean, well, he's not gonna have anything to say if he says it.
I was trying to help him out, trying to prompt him.
Well, I do have a clerk's. As you know, we have an executive session this afternoon, and, immediately after this meeting, I think it was at three forty-five, or as soon as this meeting is over, so we can go into it immediately after this meeting. Also, we received a request to speak for, for tomorrow, from a Mr. Cedric Murphy, and he was complaining because on the consent to, to speak for him, there is no place for him, he says he's handicapped, and there is no place for him to put his question and no procedure for somebody who can't get to the meeting and who is handicapped to submit a question to the council. I sent him an email and told him that we would present his questions to the council tomorrow. As I understand it, because of a federal lawsuit, the whole city is probably going to be looking at whether or not we have ADA issues, and it may be that the council wants to submit this to that commission or that organization to look at for us. In the meantime, we may want to think about, maybe having a dedicated email address for somebody who can't make it to send in a question that he has, issue has for the council, and then have that read and then dealt with the way that we normally do.
Just as a, just as a matter of making sure I understand correctly, public comments are not necessarily the same as questions for the council, does this individual...
Well, public comments are questions.
Yeah, it just seems, public comments are more like the opportunity to come and make a statement, you know, but there's not, like a que, like, I guess, what I'm trying to understand is, does this gentleman have what he needs in order to, I mean, can he pose a question to his council representative?
That's what I asked.
I think he can.
I mean, I would imagine that he could pose a question to his council representative the same way. I receive lots of questions from constituents on email, who, some of whom I never meet in person, you know, and I would assume that opportunity is afforded to him, am I correct?
Yes.
I mean, he's still able to contact us the way other people can.
I think he contacted several of you last week.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that.
I, I guess, I guess the question is, and it would be for the city attorney's office and or this commission to determine whether or not we are complying with the ADA...
Right.
And whether or not we are complying with state law. So those are two technical questions, and I think that somebody else needs to answer.
Sure. But I think the city, they didn't have a meeting set up for him, with, with him?
Yes. Our office is scheduled to meet with him, I think, this, this week, I think, Tuesday.
This week, I believe, yes. Okay. And I asked him, you know, about sending something to, an email to a council, council member, and I, I don't know who, I, he reached out to me, and I thought it was me, and then he said it was somebody else, but he moved, and then, so I don't know exactly who. Anyway, he's real adamant about meeting with someone, and, uh...
I think I saw some of the emails.
I think it's happening, so...
He's meeting this week.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
And by the way, if I may, I, I plan to call him tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, he's called several of us, and, you know, we have been very open with providing activities for disabled individuals, I don't call it handicap, I call them disabled individuals. Uh, in fact, we have a lot of camps even this summer just for them, and we've been working at bus stops, sidewalks, and so forth and so on. So, you know, I'm, I'm really not clear on what it is that he's wanting, I saw the emails, but I know that, you know, we live stream everything, you all do, the city council, and the responses, I, I didn't see an ADA non-compliance, but, you know, sometimes our citizens feel that way, and we just have to respond and give them the best, best answers that we have.
I certainly appreciate y'all giving him the opportunity to make his concerns known and listening, and we may, that's why I asked the question, we may, I may have a misunderstanding of it, but I thought, from what I heard, I thought that he, he had access to us the same way other citizens do, but, but I appreciate y'all listening to him and taking the time to, to hear those concerns out all, more fully.
He also asked about closed caption, he also asked about a chat feature, which is something I don't think the council wants to do, but I mean, all of these things probably need to be addressed in some formal way. Can he raise his hands?
Louisiana, does Louisiana require public comments?
On items, on the agenda.
That's by law.
Right.
For all government bodies.
All public meetings. It's under, I think it's Title VII, public meetings law.
Okay. Because I was thinking there is one organization that didn't have public comments, that's a public body, but...
Yeah. A long time ago, we didn't have it for items where there had already been public comments, like in MPC zoning issues, but then the law was changed to say that we had to do it too.
If it was on our agenda, we had. I mean, I do know that the outside of our agenda is definitely something that we don't have to do, but...
Right. Um, so, I, I think somebody at least ought to, we ought to read that into the public tomorrow, and I'll give it, I can do it, I'll give it to somebody else.
Keep it, keep in mind, we are, our office is scheduled to meet with him, and...
But, but I don't want him to say that the council didn't at least acknowledge his, his issue, because I think it's fishing.
Yeah. Is he, is, is he a hearing impaired?
No.
Is he a hearing impaired?
No, no.
He's speaking, he's a wheelchair.
He just prefers...
He's a spokesperson for our...
I was gonna say, there are good resources, I mean, certainly, in my district, the, there is a, a nonprofit organization or two that are very, very helpful for people who may have a specific disability, which is why I asked if he may be hearing impaired, because the, the Deaf Action Center has some great resources for people who may be hearing impaired, so, but hearing that he's not, he's just interested in knowing about it.
But, but I think, I think you've expanded and broadened the concern in that, are we in compliance with the policies and laws of the state in regards to...
He's sent a number of emails, and he raises all kinds of...
No, I'm, I'm saying, are you aware of any other city council members?
Let me, let me speak to that. We, we, if you recall, last year sometime, the city, along with several other bodies, were sued for certain ADA compliance issues.
Okay.
We have addressed those and are in the process of addressing those. We also, several years ago, as a city, undertook several projects to ensure that we were ADA compliant.
Okay.
This gentleman has raised several issues that he feels, uh, show that the city may or may not be in compliance with ADA regulations. As a part of addressing his concerns, we are going to demonstrate, and I think we're very confident in this, that the city is ADA compliant. And so, we still have not had the opportunity to meet with him, he will be here in our office this week, and we will have a better understanding, because he has taken a very broad approach in stating what the city is or is not doing as it relates to ADA compliance. Some instances that he cited are incorrect. And so, once we have had that discussion, we will also offer a report to you, I made a suggestion to the clerk that he does read that concern to the record, but at that point, and at the point we've had that meeting, it may be appropriate also to give you all an update, an executive session, on the current litigation as it relates to our ADA compliance, and that will also address potentially many of the concerns that he has.
Thank you. One other issue on a personal note, all of you know that I have difficulty with a weak voice and with hoarseness, and as a result, I've tried everything, and I will be going in for a surgical procedure on Thursday to try and repair my vocal cords, and so I won't be able to speak for a while, so I will be even more mom than I normally am.
Well, congratulations on that, I look forward to hearing a loud Arthur Thompson.
That is like, that is like the answer to my purse.
Maybe they can give you counsel one more night. If you can hear you. We can try that. Is that the head of the clerk report?
That's it.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then this meeting will be...
Mr. Chairman, additional comments?
Did I skip that, or we just...
Councilman Brown?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I want to address this with the police chief or the mayor, or both, in regards to, several weeks ago, I think it's been a month, that I had solicited assistance with crime fighting and patrolling from the state police and from the sheriff department. Sheriff Prater convened a meeting immediately after that, and mayor was president, the chief, and two council members, two members of the parish commission, and three of his chief deputies. I thought the meeting had some, had some merits, and I thought the meeting was going to trigger some, some additional discussions, and, and, and eventually, a plan of action would have been developed, but I understand it was another meeting two weeks ago, that that resulted in no action, basically. And I was, I was, I was wondering, what's, what would you consider to be the status of, of that relationship that we was trying to, that we was trying to create?
Try to create?
For, for the purpose, not, not the additional sheriff, police department interactions, but for, for the specific thing that, that we met with the chief, I mean, with the sheriff about in regards to helping with inside patrolling and other law enforcement services.
And, and I'm going to just give you a general statement, and then I'll ask Chief Crump if he'll come up. You may recall when we met with Chef Prater, we met with Chef Prater along with parish commission members?
Yes.
And there were two of you, he invited two people from the council, two from the parish commission, and two from our office.
That's right.
And the chief and I did go, and we had that, I thought was a, you know, good conversation. And of course, after that, parish commission called a meeting, during that meeting, they mentioned that they could provide some monetary resources if needed.
Yes.
And, you know, and I don't know what happened with that, except for, we had another meeting, and, um, two weeks ago, when we met, I don't think you attended that meeting with the parish commission, and, you know, some statements were made, but during that meeting, I believe, both Chief Crump and Chef Prater indicated, we already have our plan and strategies in police, and they're already working together, and I don't know if you've noticed lately, the crime is down, particularly the violent crime, is down, is trending continuously down, but they are working together. So, that's where we are. And Chief Crump, if you'd like to come up and add to that conversation, but they're working together on various sting operations and task forces, and actually did implement a warrants operation, I met with them at three o'clock one morning, and they executed on that and brought in some, you know, some felons and some people who had been committing misdemeanors on various warrants. And so, we've had some good results, and consequently, we've seen the, the crime trend down. You know, I know everybody's running on crime today, but crime is going down in Shreveport now, of course, I've, I've seen where crime is going up in other cities, but nobody's talking about that. We are working together with all law enforcement agencies, I want to say that before I stop talking, okay? Chief Crump, would you like to add?
Well, I, I, as it relates to what we're doing, again, I, I don't know the different semantics that are being used, after we, after we had that session where you were present, a, I was not actively in or present in the conversation, but my deputy chief, along with Chief Deputy Jay Long, and the personnel from each agency that was necessary, did meet, and they had actually come up with a plan to, for the sheriff department to patrol that southern area, which is what he mentioned in that meeting. And so, they got together and they talked about that, and they actually came up with a strategy, strategy to where they had talked about creating a brand-new district, it was going to be called District Fourteen, and they had met with our nine-one-one personnel and were supposed to make certain that any calls that took place in that corridor would be automatically dispatched to the sheriff's department. And that initiative was actually set to take place on June first. Prior to June first coming, we received communication from Chief Deputy Jay Long that that was going to be put on hold, and we didn't know when it was going to take off. Then the next thing happened was something relative to, to money that was from the commission side, we were told, or at least from the sheriff's department side, we were told that the sheriff's department had stated he needed thirty-three thousand dollars a month in order to do his portion. And so, from there, I don't know whether, what other communication took place relative to that amount, I know the commissioners had said they could give some money, and then when it came to the amount, I think they had to put it before their panel or their commission in order to determine if they could do that or not. At the meeting that was held, I was out, I was out sick, and at that meeting, at least I read an article where was, was said that that plan that the sheriff's department and the police department had come up with was not a good plan, and the issue with the money from the commission, the sheriff expressed he didn't want it. And so, as far as that portion, it did not go forth, but our chief deputy, Long, Chief Gooden continued to communicate, they came up with the warrants operation, and that is what Mayor Tyler spoke on, and that operation did take place, and it netted some results. When we met in the second meeting, it was expressed that we were not working together. I, I, and I don't understand that, because if, if my people are meeting with his people and we come up with something, in my mind, we're working together, and so that's why I go back to semantics, a plan, no plan, operation, no operation, but in that warrants operation that took place, the police department, the sheriff's department, the marshal's office, state police, probation and parole, all participated in that warrants operation, and it was so designed that they could periodically come back together and see the operational effectiveness of that plan, so that if it needs to be tweaked or needs to be adjusted, it could move however it needs to move in order... however it needs to move in order to deal with the issue at hand. So, we are working with the sheriff's department, at least from my viewpoint, we are. Uh, we are working with the state police. Uh, they do a lot of operations inside the city. They do a lot of things. The issue seems to be, uh, the hang-up is seeing a marked state police vehicle driving down a inner-city street, or a sheriff's department vehicle driving down an inner-city street, and because that has not happened, maybe that's why people think we're not working together. But I would also direct you to, uh, all of you, to, and, uh, an article in the Shreveport sign, and I've said that in, uh, my interview after the last meeting that we had with the commission, I think the sheriff was pretty, pretty clear. And so, I would not try to speak on anything relative to his organization, but I would suggest that you read that article. He was very clear about, uh, his feelings, I believe, relative to the Caddo Parish Sheriff's Department. Okay. Let me, let me just say this, Chief, and I appreciate, uh, your, your comments. Uh, when we met with the, with the, uh, with the sheriff, Sheriff Prater, if you recall, the conversation hinged around perception and reality, perception and reality. It, it was read, it was read out, read before that, that, that statistics for the first quarter came in, and, and that showed that crime was down, but the reality is, uh, well, the perception is...
Right.
That crime is not down.
It is.
My, my, my constituents, I get more inquiries about crime and, and them feeling unsafe in their own homes more than just about anything else. And, and he, and he, and we talked about that. He talked about that, because he said, until, until we could at least change the culture or the atmosphere or the climate, for some, perception is reality. And that rea, and the reality is that if it, if it, if there's no visible presence of an, of an, of some, something different, because we're seeing in some areas of town, uh, uh, property values and, 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 and people leaving because they don't feel safe in their, in their homes and in, in, in parts of their, this community. I was hoping, and, and I thought we was there when we left the meeting, if you remember, you know, we all came out smiling, and everybody said, "What y'all smiling about?" And I said, "We smiling because we seem like we got, we got an understanding of where we need to go from here." And then we hear other things, but the reality in my part is that, is that perception is prevailing. The reality for me is that perception is prevailing, that, that, that there's a light of visible presence of, of, uh, law enforcement. And, and that leads me to a, to a, to a quote that, that, that you said, and I, I just need you to elaborate on this. You said, "Just to have a police, state police car, sheriff car, drive through a neighborhood just for sight to you is not an effective tool, as some people may think." Is that, is that, is that your position as, as related to? Well, I, I, I said that, and I, and I still stand by it, and I, and I'll go back to this. Uh, I perceive that seems like everybody else's words or belief except mine, because I, and, and the reason I say that is, as I said in each meeting that, that we've been in and we showed our numbers, uh, those numbers show the work that the men and women of the Shreveport Police Department are doing. Uh, I understand that crime happens, and regardless of how, uh, great numbers might be, if somebody is the victim of a crime, they don't wanna know about numbers. I understand that. Uh, but it still does not refute the truth of the work that the men and women of the Shreveport Police Department are doing. Also, I will refer to, uh, at least the article stated, uh, by the sheriff that he did not have the manpower. It's in the article. He did not have the manpower to patrol in the city. And he also stated in that article that, uh, even if it happened, he would need , uh, Shreveport Police, and I think he may have mentioned the fire department. So, in the sense of effectiveness, if something happens and that unit or whoever it is that's driving through that is not readily available to properly deal with the situation, then another liability has been created. And so, that's the perspective from a law enforcement standpoint from which I was, I was speaking. And so, uh, as it was said, in the nature of crime being, being, being cyclical, and to deal with the perception of crime versus, uh, making people think that we could stamp crime out altogether, all those things were said too. So, when we met, uh, we did discuss the things that were discussed in that first meeting relative to the southern district. Now, I have only control as the chief of police over the Shreveport Police Department. I don't have control over the sheriff's department. I don't have control over any other organization. And so, if my people meet with whoever he deems to represent his agency, and what they believe to be a plan is implemented, and then that plan, uh, does not go forth, I only have control over what takes place from the side of the Shreveport Police Department. So, I have expressed that I was open to assistance, and we have been trying to do that, but again, I only, uh, have the authority, uh, to direct the men and women and the resources of the Shreveport Police Department.
And I'd, I'd like to just kind of piggyback, and I think, Chief, you've, you've explained. Sheriff Prater, um, mentioned, of course, in, in our last meeting with the parish commission, we are working together. We've been working together. The warrants operation was, uh, one that was different, and as, uh, Chief Crump said, and, and we've seen the results. In fact, I know that seven, was it 17 people were pulled off the street that were committing some of these crimes through that operation, and the operation continues. Uh, the guns that were out there, that were in the hands of people who should not have had those guns, they were confiscated, and that operation is still going. So, as a result, even of the conversation we had with our, our sheriff, we've come full circle and come up with that particular operation, even though the other one didn't work, that one is working, and we're still working on that same operation. And so, as we continue to get folks who have warrants issued because they have committed some kind of crime, if we can get some of those people off the streets, you're gonna see crime going down. Those are the people that are continuously, uh, creating some of the, the violent crimes in our city. A lot of them were domestic in nature, which we, we, we don't have any control over. We, we aren't, we're not in anybody's house. Uh, some of them were, uh, drug deals gone bad, and people made a decision that they were going to go after somebody who owed them money for drugs. But our people have been working diligently with, the morning that I met with them at three o'clock in the morning, there were nine different teams formulated, and that plan went forth, and it is yielding some results.
Yeah. And, and again, ma'am, we appreciate that. I, I think, I think we're all familiar with some of the initiatives that the Shreveport Police Department and Sheriff Department is engaged in. You, you, you recited those numerous times.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but, but my, uh, desire when, when, when I contacted Senator Togger, uh, Sheriff Governor, Governor's Office, was that extra patrolling would be awarded in some way in the city. So, and I'm on, I'm on, I'm on that way, but I'm gonna ask you one last question, and, and, because this, it really concerned me in that, in your statement, and, and, and you, you feel that a sheriff car sitting on the corner of 81st and Thornhill would not be a deterrent, or a sheriff or state police car sitting on the corner of MLK and, and Lanier Street in the Cooper Road would not be a deterrent, or a, a sheriff car sitting on the corner of Hollywood and Broadway would not deter criminal activity? Is that, that's, that's your feeling? My, my, my statement to you, sir, will be, Sheriff Prater said he did not have the manpower to assist, to assist. That, that's gonna be the answer. That's gonna be my answer to your question. Sheriff Prater clearly stated that he does not have the manpower to assist inside the city of Shreveport. I, I haven't spoken to sheriff. That was not the, the, the impression I got when we left the meeting. The, I've, I've, I've had contact with parish commissioners who were, who had a resolution ready to be introduced at their session to, to provide funding for this extra activity with the sheriff and the city. I don't know what happened. That was my responsibility, administrative, sheriff, and, and the police chief was going to, uh, make, make, make that happen to the best of their, 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 their thing, but I'm just saying that my feedback from commissioners is that they was ready to provide some funding.
And see, that's what I'm saying, but, but, but what I'm saying is, but I'm, I'm answering, and it appears that you don't believe what I'm saying.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm saying I have not spoken, and I'm just saying what was told to me, and I'm saying that the meeting, if you, if you remember, now, I'm saying...
I remember.
The last meeting is that the sheriff said there was possibilities or opportunities to do something in the city. He said that. There was commissioners in the meeting who said that we will introduce legislation to provide funding for the sheriff. That was said. And that, and that, my understanding was that was, that was continued to, to, to the, to the extent that they had a meeting to, to, to know what was they gonna fund it. And I said to them, "That's reasonable. If you was gonna pay some freight to go to California, unless you wanna know what's on the train."
But councilman, but I wasn't, you're talking about two bodies that we have no control over.
Right.
I didn't tell them not to do that.
And, and you're, and you're, you're calling us, and we have no control over those bodies.
Let me, let me say this. If, if you had come to the last parish commission meeting, the commissioners, some of them did not wanna fund it. So, I'm going to, I'm going to ask respectfully if you will call Mario Chavez and some of those, Mario is the chairman, as I understand it, on the long-range safety committee, meet, uh, committee for the parish commission. Talk to him about why they didn't fund it, okay? Because we had planned. So, I'm gonna ask that you do that.
I will do that, ma'am.
Because we, we can't, we can't respond for what the parish commission didn't do.
And I don't expect you to be a, a responsible for the parish commission.
Okay.
Okay.
If I may just respectfully ask you to do that.
And I will, I received that, and I will inquire.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, uh, I think I'm next up on the board, but I'm gonna defer to Councilman Flurry because my comments are...
Well, I'm on, I, this, this is what happens every time that we try to ask questions to the chief. Uh, it gets, I, I'm gonna just wait, now, that, 'cause I have a legitimate question, but I'll take mine up with Mayor Tyler in private, so I'll withdraw my question.
On another topic. I have received a number of calls in the past couple of weeks, and maybe some other council members have as well regarding Fairgrounds Field, and what I'd like to request, if it's possible, and, and it's fine if we do this via email, or if you'd like to do a very brief presentation tomorrow during comments, just if there are any legitimate, um, proposals from outside groups with money, uh, to, for Fairgrounds Field.
Be a short presentation.
You know, I, I have been very vocal in my comments of, "I'd like to see it leveled next week," because I don't think there's ever gonna be a purpose for that outdated facility. Uh, but if we could have a, a brief, brief presentation, and, and if there's any legitimate, um, proposals out there, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there some suggestion of the Caddo Commission being involved with the future of that?
With what now?
Not that I'm aware of.
I got an email suggesting that today from a citizen.
That was news to me, so that's, you probably got the...
Caddo Commission being something that...
Okay.
We don't have anything.
The answer is, you're in charge.
Okay. Well, if there's no further business to come before the council, I will adjourn this meeting.